May I have your attention? Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll. Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please join me, everyone, and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Madam Clerk? We are at proclamations. We have three proclamations today. The first recognizes the 30th anniversary of Enhanced 911. We have Brandon Blaney, the Director of City of Peoria Emergency Communications Center. And although he couldn't be here, we want to also acknowledge David Tuttle, the Chair of the Peoria Stark Emergency Telephone System Board. Welcome, Mr. Blaney. Thank you.
Last year, the 911 telecomm-
Oh, let me, let me read the proclamation first and then, thank you very much. We'll hear from you. Whereas tonight, we recognize the 30th anniversary of Enhanced 911 service in Peoria County and the dedicated effort over the years to implement this service. And whereas Basic 911 service was first available in Peoria in 1976 and expanded into other municipalities throughout the 1970s and 80s. And whereas in 1989, a countywide referendum passed in which voters overwhelmingly agreed to pay a small surcharge to gain Enhanced 911 service. The Peoria County Emergency Telephone System Board was soon created to implement and manage the new system. And whereas Enhanced 911 was turned on for all Peoria County residents on June 15th, 1993, the technology provides the caller's name, address, phone number, and a listing of emergency responders for that address. And whereas in 2022, our dispatchers began answering Phase 1 wireless calls, which allowed the dispatcher to see the caller's phone number. And in 2023, Peoria County became one of the first counties in the nation to receive Phase 2 wireless calls, which gave the dispatcher approximate location data as well. Whereas in 2016, text to 911 was implemented with the tagline, "Call if you can, text if you can," giving residents yet another option to reach emergency services. And whereas since its implementation 30 years ago this month, telecommunications have answered more than 3.1 million 911 calls for Peoria County, and they continue to answer calls and text messages every day of the year and every hour of the day. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the 30th anniversary of Enhanced 911 in Peoria.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Last year, the 911 telecommunications of the Peoria Emergency Communications Center fielded over 109,000 911 calls and texts, or about 300 per day. Throughout my time at the Peoria ECC, I have seen the gradual change of those calls from initially being mostly landline to now mostly cellular. While that technology has changed over the last 30 years, the main objective of our telecommunications has stayed the same: to serve and protect the residents and visitors of Peoria, as well as its police, fire, and EMS responders. 911 telecommunications are known as the first first responders. We are the calm voice in the darkness. We never know what will be on the other end of the phone when we answer the 911 call. But what we do know is the person will be in distress. Most often, the caller is in a panic, and it's one of the worst moments of their life. It is our duty to stay calm under pressure so we can gather the necessary information and disseminate it in a clear and concise manner for our other first responders. I would like to recognize not only our current Peoria ECC staff, but the former staff that helped pave the way for our department to be a leader in the 911 industry. None of this would be possible without their hard work and dedication, both past and present. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your leadership. Our next proclamation recognizes Pride Month. And we have Amy Orwig from PFLAG Peoria, as well as Derek Kimmler from Central Illinois Friends. Welcome. Whereas the City of Peoria, Illinois recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2023 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And whereas on June 28th, 1969, the riots at the Stonewall Inn in New York City have been acknowledged as the beginning of the LGBTQ+ rights movement. During Pride Month, we remember the events of June 1969 and celebrate and honor our LGBTQ+ neighbors, friends, and family. Whereas the City of Peoria celebrates diversity and is committed to supporting visibly dignity and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our community. And whereas LGBTQ+ individuals have made immeasurable impacts to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. Whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the City of Peoria's LGBTQ+ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. The City of Peoria supports the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month.
Thank you, Mayor Ali and Councilmembers. For the past 50 years, PFLAG National has been working to create a more caring, just, and affirming world for the LGBTQ+ people and those who love them. Our local chapter, PFLAG Peoria, is so thankful to share this vision with other LGBTQ+ supportive organizations, leaders such as Central Illinois Friends, Peoria Proud, and Acorn Equality, to name just a few. We are all grateful to Mayor Ali and the Peoria City Council for this proclamation, evidence that we are all working together to create a more caring, just, and affirming Peoria for the LGBTQ+ community and those who love them.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and the Council, I would also like to thank all the shoulders that we stand on as an LGBTQ+ community. You see, for hundreds of years, we've existed, even though we've been expunged from many history books, and many of the trans and non-binary individuals who have fought for our rights today, and LGBTQ+ individuals who unfortunately never had the privilege to stand in front of the likes of people like you. We stand on those shoulders, and I know myself and many of us activists here in our community don't take that lightly. And we thank you for being a part of creating a society that is so accepting, especially in a time where many of our surrounding states and locations are pushing people out that check certain boxes. We are accepting them in as a community. And it's not easy. We like to think that equality is easy, and it's not. Diversity is not easy, and it starts with having hard conversations. And the realization that the LGBTQ+ community has intersectionalities, because the LGBTQ+ community is poor, is lower socioeconomic, it's middle-class, they're black, brown, white, Hispanic, they're non-English speaking, they're immigrants, they're all boxes. We all are affected by the hate that is spewed by the LGBTQ+ community, but we also all thrive when LGBTQ+ people thrive. And so with that, I'd also like to point your attention to the fact that because of your support and because of support of this community supporting the LGBTQ+ community, Central Illinois Friends is proud to announce that we closed on a building this week on Tuesday. What, what's that, yesterday? Or what? Yesterday? And we're proud to announce that we'll be opening up Peoria's very first LGBTQ+ community center, not just to support all those that are LGBTQ+, but to provide a safe place for those who aren't, that are just wanting to learn and do better and become more accepting. And so, thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for your leadership. Our last proclamation recognizes Juneteenth. And we have Carl Adams from the Lincoln, excuse me, he's a Lincoln historian, all the way here from Washington DC, but he's actually from Peoria, from what I understand. And we have Bob Hofer with the Freedom and Remembrance, he's the committee founder. I'd like to remind everyone that both of these men will be speakers tomorrow at the Freedom and Remembrance Memorial Naming Event. It takes place at 10:00 AM tomorrow at the corner of Griswold and Montana Streets. Gentlemen, if you could come forth. Whereas Juneteenth, also called Emancipation Day and Freedom Day, commemorates the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States. It is observed annually on June 19th. Whereas on June 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation to End Slavery in the United States. And whereas more than two years passed before the news reached enslaved black people in Texas. On June 19th, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. Whereas Juneteenth is a day for all of us to reflect upon on what has happened since 1865 and to celebrate the social, economic, and cultural contributions of African-Americans in the United States. And whereas on June 16th, 2021, Governor JB Prisker signed House Bill 3992, naming Juneteenth as National Freedom Day and designating it as a state holiday. Whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed legislation into law establishing June 19th as Juneteenth National Independence Day. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery, the City of Peoria stands in solidarity with our African-American community, and we encourage the public to attend one of the many celebrations on this day. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge and celebrate the 19th of June as Juneteenth in Peoria, Illinois. Mr., Mr. Adams is the author of a book called Nance.
Trials of the First Slave Freed by Abraham Lincoln.
Thank you. Let's hear from you, Mr. Adams.
I'm originally from Alton, Illinois, where I was raised, but I lived for 25 years in this area. My children were raised here. My children attended Peoria schools. And I was, as a lifelong fan of Abraham Lincoln, I followed the travels and the trials through all three Illinois capital cities of the first slave to be freed by Abraham Lincoln, whose journey ultimately ended right here in downtown Peoria on April 6th of 1892. And for 20 years, I searched for her grave and could not find it. But thanks to Mr. Hofer and the contributions of other genealogists, they found the grave of Mrs. Nance Leggins Costly in the Old Moffett Cemetery. Following that adventure, I was asked to join the National Juneteenth Observance Foundation as their historian, since I had traced Nance through the travels of Illinois, and I also traced her oldest son, first son, Private William Henry Costly, through Peoria Pecan Roadway, down through Springfield, through the battlefields of Virginia, and then on a 2,000-mile journey around to the coast of Texas, and they landed in Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865. So as a historian for the National Juneteenth Observance Foundation, I bring to present to the mayor, the city council, and the City of Peoria, National Juneteenth Flag.
Thank you. Thank you. We are, thank you.
This is to be flown at the Freedom and Remembrance Memorial Park, which we will dedicate tomorrow.
Thank you. We are so honored. Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. Madam Clerk? We are at the approval of the minutes. Councilmember Regenbach?
I move to approve the minutes of the joint town board and city council meeting held on May 23rd, 2023, as printed.
Can I get a second, seconded by Councilmember Velpula? Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. 23-200 is a request from the town officials to approve the May 2023 actual expenditures and to approve the June 2023 anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Councilmember Graham?
Mayor Ali, I move to approve as outlined.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 23-201 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve the tree purchasing and planting contract from DA Herr &amp; Sons, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $50,000 to purchase trees to plant on city property and rights of way. 23-202 is a communication with request to approve and authorize the City Manager to execute Change Order Number 2 to the Storm Drainage Repair Annual Contract with JC Dillon, Inc., for an increase not to exceed $460,000 for a new total amount of $2,810,000. 23-203 is a communication with request to approve the low bid and award a contract to Stark Excavating for the Old Big Hollow Bridge Rehabilitation in the amount of $315,105.50 with an additional authorization of $31,510.50 for contingencies for a total amount of 23-204 is a communication with request to approve the low bid and award the seal coating contract 2023 to RA Cullen &amp; Sons, a division of UCM, Inc., in the amount of $381,489 with an additional authorization of $38,111 for contingencies for a total amount of $419,600. 23-205 is a communication with request to approve the low bid and award the high-quality aggregate polymer modified slurry seal contract 2023 to Microsurfacing Contractors LLC in the amount of $445,361.23 with an additional authorization of $44,538.77 for contingencies for a total amount of $489,900. 23-206 is a communication with request to approve the low bid and award a contract to Napcon Contractors, Inc., for the riverfront entrances in the amount of $153,054 with an additional authorization of $15,306 for contingencies for a total amount of $168,360. 23-207 is a communication with request to approve an amendment to the agreement with Phoenix Community Development Services regarding the Emergency Solutions Grant COVID Funding. 23-208 is a communication with request to approve the site application for a Class H Temporary Outdoor Liquor License for an event to be held by Steamboat Classic NFP on Southwest Water Street at State Street, now near Kelleher's, on June 17th, 2023. And on your desk, there is a handout. It's a letter from the police chief and a certificate of liability insurance. 23-209 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Land Bank Board with a request to concur of Councilmember Michael P. Vespa. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there items to remove from consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. I, I think Councilmember Vespa had a question on whether he should abstain from the item with his name, and I would ask corporate counsel to advise.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, thank you. We will move on. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. 23-210 is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request for the following. A, approve the sole source purchase of a Thermo Scientific Gemini Handheld Analyzer and True Narc Unlimited model from Thermo Scientific Portable Analytical Instruments, Inc., in the amount of $164,504. And this item requires a 2/3 vote of council members voting, no less than six. And then, Item B is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2023 revised budget relating to the use of opioid settlement funds for the equipment in the amount of $164,504. And this too requires a 2/3 vote of council members voting, no less than six. And we need separate votes on each.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask the police chief to come up and talk about this item and just explain the rationale behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. In short, this is a technology, and we want to be able to use technology to keep our officers and the community safe. This is a technology that can permit the identification of fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, and a variety, about 700 other items, including explosives, materials remotely without removing material from the container. This utilization of such technology can rapidly provide critical information to our first responders that may prevent an exposure that would affect the health and safety of personnel operating in the vicinity. And it falls right in line with the opioid settlement. We did our research and made sure this was an item that we could purchase. Otherwise, we would not be able to have been able to purchase this without this settlement.
Okay. Any questions for the chief? Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is one of them. I would say integration of science into detection is one of the most innovative things that I've seen, but I have a couple of questions. So if you look at the, this is an equipment. You're going to buy a piece of equipment.
Yes, sir.
So, and then, do you, do you have any, you know, plans to see how much, how many times it needs to calibrate? You need to calibrate every machine after certain use. So do you know how to do this?
I'm going to ask Sergeant Johnson, who did all the research on this for me, to step up. Keep backup with me for this reason.
Have the expert try to answer that for us.
Yes, sir. The machine is calibrated every use. It has an internal calibration feature. And we were able to have some experience with that during a test and evaluation period we actually had with both units.
And I see that we all, we have to buy a, buy a test kit, the solution kit, which allows you to do 100 tests.
Yes, so the, the low-dose identification kit would allow us to basically observe trace amounts of fentanyl or suspected illicit substances in a solution. So we're seeing, we can just see those minuscule amounts with that technology.
Right, but the idea is to have, have this kit being bought after every 100 tests, is it right?
We would have to buy some more solution or some more of those vials.
Right, right. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve file number 23-210, letter A.
Is there a seconded by Councilmember Allen? Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Stick around, chief. Madam Clerk?
We are at Item B.
Oh, Item B, Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve file number 23-210, letter B.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions? Councilmember Gordon Young?
I'll be abstaining from this vote. I serve on the Illinois Remediation Advisory Board.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention. Gordon Young. Madam Clerk?
23-211 is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request for the following. A, approve the sole source purchase of 45 PICO MVS Ballistic Body Armor Systems from Tire Tactical Body Armor in the amount of $126,829. And this item requires 2/3 vote of the council members voting, no less than six. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2023 revised budget related to the use of asset forfeiture funds to purchase equipment in the amount of $126,829. And this too requires a 2/3 vote of council members voting, no less than six. And we'll need separate votes on each.
Okay, Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve file number 23-211, letter A.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve file number 23-211, letter B.
Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Velpula? Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash two one two, excuse me, is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve a contract with Woodard Curran in the amount of $99,950 for water system assessment and technical support.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's that time every five years again where we move into the process where we discuss whether or not the council wants to proceed with doing the due diligence, the formal due diligence, and starting the process to evaluate the price on the water company, whether or not they want to buy the water company. As we discussed this several years ago, Councilman Euler mentioned that we should set aside some money in our fund balance to plan to do some of the preliminary due diligence work. We have solicited, and just for background for everyone, the deadline for the council to act is six months in front of the anniversary of when the water company was sold and when the water system was sold. That comes out to be November 3rd of this year is the six months ahead of the May date. So what we have to do really is probably by the end of October, the council will have to make a decision whether or not you want to proceed with the process to buy the water company. And it's really a valuation process that will take potentially up to two and a half to three years to go through that process. What we're doing this evening and asking you to consider is a consulting contract with Woodard Curran. And Jennifer Berger from Woodard Curran is here, one of the principals from the firm, to begin the assessment, or begin some of the initial analysis so that when you make that decision in October, you're going in with eyes wide open. So we're really thinking about how we can come up and analyze some of those larger policy considerations you need to think about before you have to make that decision. Because once you make that decision, it's going to be significantly more expensive. There's going to be more dollars that we're going to have to place in order to do that. But this will allow us to start to do that, some of that legwork. So the contract itself has three phases or three tasks that we've built into that. First, that Woodard Curran would help us to develop some operations and engineering considerations for owning the water company. That second, they'll summarize some of the buyout process considerations, you know, identifying in better detail what are some of those costs that we might incur? What are the range of costs to purchase? All of that. And then lastly, that they would come back to the city council and present their findings in time for the council to make those decisions before that deadline, which is really, for lack of, if we meet on a Tuesday night, it would be Halloween Eve. We'd have to do that. So that would be the last Tuesday we'd have before that six-month deadline. So that's it in a nutshell. As I mentioned, Ms. Berger is here, as well as Director Powers, and Corporation Counsel Hayes is here as well if there's any legal questions that any members of the council may have.
Just one side point, Mayor.
Powers?
In your packages, Counselor, there is the subset within Phase One, Two, and Three. It looks very abbreviated. We did that for brevity because if we were to break out each individual task in the background, you'd be on like three pages. So you do have in your packet the actual task or subsets for each phase, which are quite in-depth. So if you want to read them, they're there for you to peruse at your leisure. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I'm sure we have some questions. I know I do. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This is effectively what we set the money aside for in the budget cycle, so I would move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Sears. Did you also want to comment, Councilmember Sears? Or just a second?
I just wanted a second for now. I will make some comments later.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Questions and comments for either the manager or Director Powers? And I'll start with some questions that I have. When I look at the tasks associated with the effort, there's three phases. Of course, the last phase is the presentation to the council. But the first phase, Task One, is a review of the background information of the franchise agreement and develop information detailing the steps and timeline of water system buyout. This task includes summarizing the history and results of past attempts to buy out the water system and background information about Illinois American Water Company and the demographics of Peoria's system. First, I'm questioning why we have to pay for that? Seems that we should have the background information related to the franchise agreement and could, I think, successfully get background information on Illinois American Water Company and their system demographics. As it relates to specifically Phase One, it seems like we've done this before. And so I'm wondering, why are we doing this again? And I've been just off and on for the last six years studying this issue as it relates to the water company buyout. And I know it's complex, and I know it's controversial. I have some concerns on spending $100,000 on a study if we're not leaning toward a purchase of the water company and paying for, I think, some items that it seems like we've, we already have that information, or we went through this exercise again. So I guess I want to throw that question out to you, Director Powers, or to the manager as it relates to some of these tasks and gathering information. And it just seems that we've done some of this due diligence or exercise previously.
Mayor, I would concur that, yes, we have put together a lot of that information in prior discussions from a staff perspective. We have summarized some of that history. I don't think each one of these tasks is necessarily set up to be equally costly. It could be just a simple, Task One is going to be a short summary of that to document that for you. Some of the larger detail in the very first section or their first phase is what comes after that, which are some of those operating considerations, some of those issues surrounding the engineering considerations that we need to be thinking about. It's very complex because now there are a lot of other communities that are involved with the water company. It's not just the City of Peoria. So we would be buying assets that are outside of the City of Peoria as well. So all of that is part of that discussion. And I think that's where the complexity comes in for this first phase, is in that component, not really in the summary section of that.
Okay, okay. And then there's been some past due diligence efforts, right? Where quite a bit of money was spent on some initial, maybe more than $100,000?
Oh, it was. And that would have been probably in the 2002 period of time when really council, that was the last time they went through the valuation process itself. So, I mean, a lot has changed since 2002. So some of that, at least initial work, I think we're looking at it as we need to give you fresh information to think about as we go forward.
Okay. And then some of those changes, especially in recent years, seem to be changes related to higher demands for water quality and those expenses that might be related to assuring water quality in terms of that infrastructure.
Absolutely. In the, in Task Two under Phase One, one of the, or Task Three, excuse me, under Phase One, they talk about some of the regulatory requirements. And there's emerging regulatory requirements that are coming out. We know that the water company is embarking now on lead service line replacements throughout the city. And we have literally thousands of them. There's a website you can go out to on the water company's website and look at the map and see if your own home has a lead service line, which mine does. So as you start to look at that, you can see the amount of work that it's going to take for whoever's running the water company to have to make those investments. In addition, there's other regulatory requirements that are coming out that are noted in the task list that are going to have some significant cost implications as well for the water company.
Thank you. I have more, but I won't be greedy here. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is probably going to be the best $100,000 this council could appropriate this year. As I sit around this horseshoe, and Councilman Grab and I visited on this topic earlier, having voted on this topic multiple times, we consistently hear from, dare I say, the special interests involved in this, whether it's the water company and itself or the community activist groups that think we need to buy it at all costs. Of all the things that we vote on, this is probably one of the most complex because the vote tonight is not to move ahead with due diligence because that's a very specific thing in the contract that we'll be voting on in November. But this is setting the groundwork to give us some unbiased information as to the actual costs involved to do the full due diligence, as well as what the repercussions will be moving forward. So I would strongly encourage my colleagues to support this for those very reasons. This will give us the 30,000-foot view of what the next phase will look like if we choose to do that. In the years I've served on council, we've never taken that next step. And I think it would be premature to say that approving this indicates a desire one way or the other on the council. This is a fact gathering proposition before us, and I think we need to view it as that. And then in the October timeframe, we will have that full discussion that will take us to seek a full valuation of it or decide that this is not the time to do that. So I think we would be very shortsighted not to approve this tonight because this will give us some very critical information that clearly has changed since the last valuation process in the early 2000s. And frankly, there's been a lot of changes in this industry in the last five years as well. So I will be supporting it and encourage my colleagues to do so as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for your comments, Councilman Regenbach. Always a voice of reason. I do have some questions for the manager. Sir, can you talk about, when was the last time this preliminary assessment was done for the water company?
I can't recall us hiring another outside firm to do this. In 2018, staff wrote up some information the council took into consideration. We had hired outside counsel at that time because we were in discussions with the water company about some franchise negotiations at that period of time. In 2013, there was a small subcommittee, a public committee that was appointed that looked at this issue and provided some recommendations. And then, after that, that goes back before I was here. I do know that in the 2002 range, when it was serious about the serious discussions about the water buyout at that point in time, there were consultants that were hired because you were in the midst of that valuation process. That was the last time that we got a true number on the water company valuation. It was, I think, $227 million.
So the last time we had a true evaluation, it was estimated at $227 million? And that was 2002? So my assumption is it's probably substantially more now, but I'm not a mathematician or a statistician there. One of my favorite phrases that a mentor says to me is, "Keep the main thing the main thing." And I think we need to do that in this aspect right now, continue to focus on basic core services of public safety, improving our infrastructure and our overall quality of life. I do appreciate the comments that were shared by Councilman Regenbach because I do see the silver lining in doing the due diligence. But I think we know the answer to this question without needing to spend $100,000 for the crystal ball. So I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just kind of wondering, I was listening to some of the comments, and I do appreciate all of them. I would really be interested in knowing what we paid back in 2002 to begin this process because it sounds like even at this initial phase, if we decide to go forward, our cost to proceed in this due diligence process will get even more expensive. And I would like to be as careful as possible about how we move forward, especially considering this is taxpayers' monies. And I am seriously not sure yet that the benefits outweigh the costs we'll have to pay if we continue to proceed down this path. So I am very concerned about the amount of money the city would put forth to pursue this process at this point, knowing that we spent more than $100,000 in 2002. I just don't know that we have the fiscal wherewithal to move in that direction, given what we've got to do with regards to our pension costs and things of that nature. I don't know that we're in a position to just spend money increasingly without knowing the benefits, whether or not they will eventually outweigh the costs we're going to have to put forward in this process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Sears?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe my colleague, Mr. Regenbach, hit the nail on the head. And I want to applaud our city manager. Last time was part of this journey. It was really very, very messy. And we really, all of us, got a lot of different information and tried to make a decision, to the best of our knowledge. So I applaud you, Mr. Manager, for suggesting a third party to help us so that all of us have the same information when it's time to have an intelligent conversation about this process. So to me, I see this money as an investment. It's not money spent, it's money invested for our constituent so that a few months from now, when these reports are coming back, that we can, number one, have all the same information and have an intelligent conversation based on all the information that the third party we have gathered for us. So I will obviously be supporting this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, some of you know my thoughts on theoretically buying out the water company. But I think that this move is responsible. The thing that is going to weigh most heavily on my mind as we move down the road is what does this do to the ratepayers? Whether this utility stays in private hands or goes into public hands, what's going to happen to the ratepayers? Assuming, assuming that the system is maintained. That's one of my bugaboos, and I could talk about it tonight, but I'm not going to. I would just like to say that I think this is a prudent step. It doesn't commit us in any way to an outcome. But it starts to lay the groundwork so we can see what we're actually talking about. So I'll be in favor. So I'll be, I'll be in favor of this, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I appreciate the discussion on both sides of this, but to respond to some of the apprehension, I guess I would have to kind of liken it to the discussion that we had about rail. And we're spending money to really understand what it is we're even looking at and where we would want it to go. And that's the votes that we've already taken on the rail investments that we've made, with little to no opposition, was to spend money to see what the effect was of that decision. And that's exactly what this is, is what does that path look like? What do those decisions look like? And in the same discussions we had on that topic, we invested money in evaluating that without much to any question about doing it. And I would say that's exactly where we are at here, is that it's an investment in understanding what we're even looking at, so an educated decision can be made. And we've already made commitments of dollars to do the exact same thing in other places. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I, you know, I'm big on studies, studying a problem in order to make a decision that has, you know, the information needed to, to make that decision. In this case, it is an issue that I've studied off and on for the last six years. And I think that, I, I agree with you, Councilmember Regenbach, that we will have some new information from this study, and it, it appears that we're going to adopt that. But I will be voting no, because I honestly don't believe that the city can afford to purchase the water company, for one thing. I think that the costs will be astronomical. I don't believe that we should be taking on that astronomical, astronomical expense. I think it's very risky. Perhaps the study will come back and, and say that. I, I can't relate it, Councilmember Euler, to the rail, because we're not talking about another entity that will be providing most of the funding for that, for that operation. We're talking about the city of Peoria, assuming the costs and, you know, taking out bonds for the purchase of a, a water company. So I am not a proponent for moving in that direction, and I think that this is a step toward that direction. So I, I respect everyone who is voting yes in support of the study, and, and it looks, again, like that's where we're, that's what we'll be doing, and I'll respect that entire process. But personally, I have to vote no today.
Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be voting yes on this particular item, because simply we don't know what we don't know. I think I've heard very good arguments on both sides of this. What I don't like really in principle is a private company extracting profits from the citizens of Peoria and putting it in the pockets of shareholders, many of whom live outside of here, or using it to build out their infrastructure in other communities. At the same time, we do know that there's potentially going to be quite a bit of expense rebuilding these lead pipes, replacing these lead pipes. That's going to be expensive if we were to buy it, that would be our responsibility. Also, borrowing costs at our, are right now very high. Interest rates are very high. And if we were to issue municipal bonds, we would, we would probably not get a great rate. It'd probably be a lot higher than the treasury rates right now, which I think are, you know, many points. So, I mean, there is, there's a lot to consider here. I, I want to know the margins. I want to get a better idea of the margins, the profit margins, that this Illinois American Water is extracting out of this. But it's going to have to be considerably high to justify the purchase. This, I mean, we are talking about taking hundreds of millions of dollars in bonds at a, at a high interest rate. So the margins have to be very high. But we don't know what we don't know at this point, so spending a hundred thousand dollars to make a better informed major decision, I think is a good idea. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve, let's see, is it one or two? Approve the contract with Woodard Corren. Corren? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with four nays, Ali, Allen, Gordon Young, and Jackson.
Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash two thirteen is a communication from the city manager and director of human resources with a request for the following. A, approve existing property and commercial auto insurance coverages with Liberty Mutual Insurance through Alliant Insurance Services, Inc., at a one-year cost of $380,343, inclusive of fees. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2023 revised budget relating to the payment of insurance premiums in the amount of $160,000. And item B requires a two-thirds vote of the council members voting, no less than six, and we need two separate votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just quickly scanning the audience, looking for Ed Hopkins from our human resources department, who's here that can, can talk about this. This is an approval of our liability, excuse me, our property insurance. And unfortunately, and I, and I may ask Mr. Hopkins to come forward to the podium, just to give you a snapshot of what the market looks like. It is higher than, than where it's been in years past. Unfortunately, the property market, insurance market, is just moving in that direction. But, Mr. Hopkins, maybe if you could just share kind of what the state of the market, insurance market, looks like, which isn't pretty good.
It's pretty bad. Yes. It's probably the hardest market that we've seen probably in 20 years. Although we were able to get a decent increase rate on this particular year, just over eight percent, which isn't a bad increase, but the problem is, in addition to all the, the hard markets, and a lot of the insurers and reinsurers are leaving the market and, and exiting the public sector market. So there's a lot less players, and so it drives the cost up. But in addition to that, this particular year, we ended up having an appraisal done. We were overdue for an appraisal, and the values of our properties went up by 30%. So we now have property values in the range of $232 million worth of property. We were well below 200, 200 million last year. So with an increase of 30, 30% in values, obviously that drives the premium up quite a bit as well. So given that, and the fact that we, we saw a hard market as well on the liability side, we ended up spending a little more than we would have normally spent on the liability side, so we're, we're needing the budget exception to have enough money to renew the property side.
Questions for Mr. Hopkins? I get a motion to approve. Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any discussion? This is on item A. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Kelly? Sorry about that. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve item B of twenty-three two thirteen.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash two fourteen is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with recommendation from staff for the following. A, adopt an ordinance annexing property located at 9601 North Allen Road, Peoria, Illinois, designated as Lot One. This item requires a two-thirds vote of corporate authorities, eight votes. And B, adopt an ordinance rezoning property to Class I-1 Industrial Business Park District for the property located at 9601 North Allen Road, Peoria, Illinois, designated as Lot One, and we will need two separate votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a annexation agreement that we actually took place in, in February. It's coming in in phases. Assistant Community Development Director Leah Allison is here, and she can explain it in much better detail than I can. So I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So this is correct. In February of this year, you approved the annexation agreement for about a 17-acre parcel. The action before you tonight is executing the actual annexation of Lot One, which is about just under three acres of the property. So the first step is to annex, and then the second part, B, is to actually zone this three-acre lot to industrial one, I-1. And then hopefully in the near future, you may see development come before you for this lot. Any questions that I can answer?
Seer?
No question, but I'd just like to move to, to accept item number twenty-three dash two fourteen, letter A.
Is it seconded by Councilmember Euler? Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just before I make my motion, I want to congratulate Leah on all the, the work you've done on this project. It's been great, so thank you very much for all your efforts. Move to accept file number twenty-three dash two fourteen, B.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Allison. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-three dash one eighty-one is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance number seventeen five four three, and a Class R four, single-family residential district for townhomes, to include a short-term rental for the property located at 824 West Moss Avenue, Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Doolin is here, and I think he can outline some of the steps that were taken in the intervening period since this was deferred.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Manager. This came before you two weeks ago, and Councilman Grab asked for a deferral to give the applicant time to meet with the neighborhood association to discuss the project. They did. The neighborhood association let us know that after that meeting, it went really well, and they'll be supportive of this project. Some of the staff's initial concerns were taken care of with some past hotel taxes that have been paid, so with that, we would ask for approval.
Councilmember Grab?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lee. The brownstones on Moss Avenue represent a wonderful development, was well received a number of years ago by the West Bluff and by the Moss Bradley Residential Association. For those of you familiar with this, this development is in an area that is bounded by the Main Street corridor, moving south to the edge of the Illinois River. This area is exploding with almost $275 million in development, just during the past six years. The Moss Avenue Historic District is an attractive place for many of our citizens to live, including some from the high-tech creative arts fields. The street where the brownstones are located is one of our historic streets. It is in one of our historic districts. And after the Moss Bradley, as Director Doolin points out, after the Moss Bradley Executive Board met with the Lewis's, it has determined that this would be a positive step forward, and they recommended approval of this short-term rental at 824 West Moss, and I move to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach? Any discussion? Glad things worked out, Councilman. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash one ninety-six is a communication from the city manager and chief of police with a request for the following. A, approve and authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and the Illinois Secretary of State Police, under the Greater Peoria Auto Crimes Task Force Grant, in the amount of $2,150,700. And B, approve and authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and county of Peoria, includes Peoria County Sheriff's Office and State's Attorney's Office, under the Greater Peoria Auto Crimes Task Force Grant, in the amount of $2,150,700, and we need two votes.
These may look familiar to you from our last council meeting. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this is the, the two missing agreements that we didn't have at the last meeting. You, you've already approved the budget and, and established the funding, so this is really just the two agreements that we have with the Secretary of State Police and with the Sheriff's Department. And representatives of both entities are here as well.
Can I get a motion on the floor? Councilmember Allen, move to approve, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any discussion? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few questions and some clarification. Our conversation, Mr. Manager, page one, just wanted to make sure you clarify everybody who's listening and looking. This is a four-year agreement, correct?
That is correct. This is anticipated to be a four-year agreement.
And for, I can't see it right now, over $3 million, but it says the first three years, 2.5, 2.15 million dollars. So where's the fourth year, basically?
It will, there will be an additional need for each year. We're going to have to appropriate that as those grant funds come to us, so there'll be separate actions for those items, probably in the budget process, just as we anticipate that those funds come through.
If I could ask just a couple of questions to our, our police chief, it'd be great Thank you, Chief. I've been in some meetings with you. Obviously, there's a lot of dealers, car dealerships in the fifth district with a lot of these problems. Can you explain to us, and I don't know if it's a fair question or not, what do you think is the biggest problem with people stealing cars?
We're seeing quite a bit of juveniles involved, and I, I think that's the biggest issue for us when we talk at the law enforcement side of who's doing it, is the juveniles. This doesn't only apply to just the stolen vehicles. We're also talking about stolen vehicle parts, right? The catalytic converters have been an issue for us. This will allow us to have the resources and manpower, if you will, to be able to follow up with, with our salvage yards, et cetera, in this, in these thefts.
So there's a, there's another, I think, the difficult question to answer, but what do you, what do you want to accomplish? I mean, we're going to spend a lot of money, or millions of dollars. What do you hope to accomplish? How will we know if we're successful or not, or not, three or four years from now?
Well, I think we're, we want to see a reduction. We want to see a reduction in the amount of stolen vehicles, right? We want to, we want to be able to, how much have we been able to educate the community? How much have we been able to reduce the numbers? How much have we been able to reduce the numbers of catalytic converters being stolen? And how many people have we been able to prosecute on the flip side of that, that did commit these? You know, if we can't find them now, in comparison, are we able to close out these cases?
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just a comment. This is definitely a step in the right direction, so I definitely will be supporting this tonight. I recently had a, a constituent who's car was stolen from their apartment complex. When he saw that his car was moving from his parking spot, he has a young family, he came outside with his firearm to protect himself. And when he looked into the car, he saw that they were juveniles, and so he attempted to tell them, hey, get out of my car, and they still just took off. And he didn't have it in him to fire or hurt, he didn't want to hurt these kids. And I appreciated his empathy and compassion. Not everyone is going to have that. And when we have juveniles, even adults who are participating in these activities, when you play silly games, you win silly prizes. And I hope that we don't get to a situation where we have someone get hurt or killed over one of these vehicular crimes. And so I really hope that we can start curbing this negative activity that is occurring in our city, because I'm afraid that that may be- in our city, because I'm afraid that that may be in the forecast in the future if we don't get this under control. So, thank you, Chief, and thank you to everyone involved. And if you're listening to this, the City of Peoria is taking this very serious, and we really need you all to stop doing this, because I'm afraid that someone's going to get hurt or killed over one of these acts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Looks like we have no more comments or questions. Please cast your ballots for item A. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Allen, set for B?
Move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash one-ninety-seven is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request to approve and authorize the City Manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Peoria and Carl Health Services under the co-responder unit for a six-month period utilizing grant funding from the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, providing the co-responder unit in the amount of three-million-sixty-eight-thousand dollars.
And again, you saw this information at the last council meeting without the agreement. Any questions for the chief? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry I was not here last meeting, but I just have a few question or comment for our chief also. Again, this is over three-million-dollar budget. This is a new creation, correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
New creation, and can you tell us a little bit, if you can? We've got over a million dollars of equipment for the first six months. What kind of equipment are we getting?
So, this was obviously on the last council meeting. There's a, some, there's a quick-response vehicle for our SWAT medics to be right up on scene and be able to triage and care for victims of crimes. There's two other vehicles that are, if you will, mobile, mobile offices. We, in policing, we oftentimes have to speak, right, with a witness, with a victim, and we have to put them in the back of a squad car, because we have nowhere else to put them. Well, we want to change that feeling of being revictimized by being put in the back of a vehicle, of a squad car with a cage. We want to put them in a, in a mobile office, if you will, where we can talk to them, keep them out of the lens of the cameras that are out on scene, video cameras or the cellphones, be able to talk to them privately, get more information, triage, get them mobile to a place where we need to keep them safe, while having another vehicle that continues to talk to suspects if we have a suspect still inside a building.
So, because this is a new creation, is there's any track record, past track record from Peoria or any other cities that has this type of unit?
No, sir. Not, not the way we're doing it, no.
Okay. So, the next question, really, just a comment from Mr. Manager. I get offended a little bit here under impact if denied. I don't know who wrote that, but it said, "Department will lose out on a critical component of community safety." I mean, if this is a new creation, I'm not sure, I mean, obviously, I'm a hundred percent behind this, but I just don't like the way how you write things, where it's a critical component of community safety. I mean, it's a brand-new unit, right? So, we just don't know. So, I just don't like the way this is written, and I don't know who writes that, Mr. Manager, so just a side comment on that. But congratulation, I mean, obviously, I'm a hundred percent behind this, and I hope it makes a big difference for City of Peoria. So, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Is that correct? No. No.
We need a motion. We do not have a motion yet.
Yeah, this is a different. Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any additional comments? And thank you, Dr. Booth, for attending on behalf of Carl Health. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at new business.
Is there any new business? Councilmember Graeb?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that most council members who are in touch with their constituents know that there's a great deal of tension in this community, especially as it relates to very public displays of criminality, very public displays of juvenile delinquency that are repeated and that we read about over and over and over again, or watch on our TVs. Some time ago, when Chief arrived in town, given my background as an educator, one of the things I wanted us to look at, Mayor, I talked to you about this as well, and you agreed that it'd be a good idea to do PSAs to remind parents that they are responsible for their children and knowing where their children are. And when we read some of the reports that come across our desk in the morning, it's very disheartening to see any type of criminality, but especially young kids running rampant, repeatedly the same kids doing aberrant things, hurting each other, stealing and victimizing. I believe we're at an inflection point, and I do believe that we are going to come out of this as a city stronger than ever before. We have approved numerous items tonight, including addressing mental health issues. However, I want to quickly point out that I do not believe every youngster who steals a car is mentally ill. I believe there have never been consequences for some of these kids, and we need to provide The time for equivocation and wrist slaps is over in Peoria. And the question I have to ask is, when we have all these kids out, two, three, four in the morning, shooting guns, et cetera, is where are the parents? Where are they? What is their responsibility under our state statutes? Corporation Counsel Hayes, could you provide a report back to this body, which would outline the potential for recovery from parents or guardians for damages caused by their minor children under the Illinois Parental Responsibility Act? Could you do that in two weeks?
I'd be happy to do so, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome. Councilmember Hayes, did you have anything additional? I'm sorry, I didn't recognize your light.
Thank you, Your Honor. No, I'd be happy to report back in two weeks on that issue.
Okay. Thank you. New business, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just kind of like to continue along the vein of Councilmember Graeb. I, too, have been disturbed, I don't know, for the last couple of months, and I'm just kind of at wit's end, and I, I would like to see the city take the lead in this effort, and I thank you, Councilmember Graeb, for your request. I think I've mentioned to the chief, we have a curfew ordinance on the books. Is there some way we could enforce this, Chief? It's not, we know there are juveniles out. We also know that there are large numbers of people over twenty or twenty-one. I read just about a couple of months ago, Peoria's not the only city dealing with these issues, and I believe it was Columbus, Ohio, there was such a, such a large amount of violence occurring that they decided to shut down their business district a little bit early, because some of the businesses had gunshot, bullet holes in their windows as a result of all of the violence that was going on. I would like to know how many bars have four o'clock licenses? Is that something we could get a report on, Corporation Counsel Hayes? Because I think until we can get a handle on what's going on, large crowds down on Main Street overnight, just hanging out, I think we, as a city, have to be a little bit more intentional in our efforts, and I'm not advocating shutting down bars, but I think we need to consider all options, because we're at a situation where we need all hands on deck. I've reached out to men's groups. I remember reading the report from the Assistant Chief, talking about, just recently, the fact that they, they need help. They need help with some of these crowds, and so I'd like to know how many bars have four a.m. licenses. I don't think it's unrealistic for us to, if this is a way to get these crowds under control and stop some of the shooting that we've seen going on downtown, maybe we could consider the possibility of at least temporarily seeing if they could shut down a little bit early, earlier rather than later, until we can get this situation under control. They're not all juveniles, Councilmember Graeb. We've got a lot of people, twenty and twenty-one, hanging out, whether they're in vehicles, whether they're on Main Street, whether they're on Richmond Avenue, behind high schools, in parking lots. We've just got too much activity going on overnight, and it's not, it's having an adverse effect, not only on those impacted, but, you know, I know I'm bothered by it. So, I would like to get a report back on the number of bars that have four a.m. licenses. Maybe we could have a discussion as to what we could do to temporarily get a handle on this situation until we can get this crowd situation under control. And, Chief, maybe you can help us out in terms of what we can do to try to enforce our curfew, because we've got to do something about this, and I think we, as a city, should take the lead. And I hope parents are listening, because, as I said, we need all hands on deck. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Corporation Counsel?
Yes, ma'am. There are ten Class One licenses. Those allow entities to stay open till, till four a.m. and serve liquor. There are a subclass of two a.m. licenses as well, and I can report back to Council with a complete list of those next, next meeting with, so you know all the different licenses. I'll just mention that the four a.m. licenses are only available right in the downtown area. So, I would also add that the chief will tell you that's where we're having the issues. So, I would be happy to provide that information for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hayes, and if we could get those before the next meeting, that would be even better, I believe.
I can forward them this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to just state a couple of things. First off, I want to shout out the Peoria Park District for their efforts. See, we have trustees, Seer, in the building for Park-a-palooza that occurred this past weekend, as well as the drone show. Park-a-palooza with the bouncy houses and everything was amazing. I'm proud to report back that my Achilles is still intact after trying to jump with my kids, but no, in all seriousness, no, it was just a beautiful time on the riverfront. Yeah, thousands of people downtown for that event. There was a concert, there was a drone show, and then when you looked over while the drone show was happening, you saw the fireworks occurring over at Dozer Park after the Chiefs game, and so it was just Peoria bliss, if you will. So, I definitely want to shout out the Park District and State Representative Jahann Gordon-Booth for her effort in bringing that opportunity to our riverfront, and hopefully we can bring that back next year. I definitely would love to support it again. And then the next thing I want to announce is, this Saturday, the annual Juneteenth Fest will be occurring down at Carver Center from eleven to eight p.m., presented by the Yanni Collective. Our very own Councilmember Bernice Gordon Young will be the Madam of Ceremony there. Great event, if you haven't been. A lot of different community vendors and resources and activities will be present. It's just going to be a great fun time celebrating Juneteenth, so I definitely want to shout out the Yanni Collective for their effort in creating these quality-of-life opportunities for our community, so get out there and support the Juneteenth Fest this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Two things from me. The first is to ask for a report back from the manager regarding the process for consideration of Juneteenth as a city holiday. It's a, it's a national holiday, it's a state holiday. Why not let it become a city holiday? So, I would like to look at the process for making that a reality for next year. And then, secondly, I want to thank everyone for their participation in the strategic planning kickoff that occurred last Thursday and Friday. We had over four hundred individuals, Peoria stakeholders, to participate in that process. We've gotten nothing but positive feedback from those, the two-day kickoff. I'd like to thank the, our project manager for that event, Assistant City Manager Kimberly Richardson, and I know that the process continues. That was the kickoff of two days, but the process continues. There's also a need, I think, to convene all of the city council for a, a six-hour session that might occur over one day. It might occur over two days, you know, three hours and three hours or six hours, but I know that there's some challenges with getting the dates aligned. Can you just kind of give us an update, Ms. Richardson, regarding the process and how we hone in on securing the date for council as well?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I would say that we are working on the timeline, working backwards, and so we're trying to get the strategic plan completed by October. We were wanting to make sure that we can give time for the council to review the documents, and also we have this community process as part of it. Looking at the schedule that we have in place right now, we have a community forum that's supposed to take place on July twentieth and July twenty-first. That is to help inform the conversation that will take place with the council, which is what we're now looking to address with the time and date. We had initially looked at a weekday, recognizing that for some, that would have been a little bit of a challenge. However, right now, I think we have to look at it weekday, so we can have a quorum to meet the obligations of us having a meeting and discussing the strategic plan. So, what I will do is work with our administrative assistant for the council to present additional dates. That will be in August. We need to try to keep this contained in August if we want to keep on our timeline. If the council sees fit to move the timeline, then that's when we can look into September, but in order to ensure in October adoption, we will need to make sure that the session that takes place with the city council occurs in August. And then, once that occurs, then senior leadership staff will be able to then provide feedback as well, but your meeting needs to occur first in order for that to take place.
How can the public engage in the strategic planning process now and not have to wait to one of those meetings that they may not be able to participate?
Very good answer, and actually have cards here tonight to pass out, but as of tomorrow, we will have a live, our Peoria 2023 webpage, which will allow for a community to provide feedback electronically, as well as there will be non-scientific surveys on that website and additional information where they are able to provide feedback. We do have opportunities for us to have smaller community gatherings where we are putting together a packet for individuals who are interested. They will be able to request that information also on our peoria2023.org website. It's, it's a one-stop shop for information, updates, as well as times and dates of any convenes that we do have related to the strategic planning process.
And we're going to push that information out, I take it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for your leadership in this effort.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
We have one, two, three, four, five. Five cards. The first is Rose Ferro.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Peoria City Council. As many of you have heard by now, the library and the bargaining team took the contract we have been negotiating into mediation on June seventh and June eighth. Although we cannot speak on what occurred during mediation, we can say that we did not come to an agreement, as the offer we received was unacceptable, laughable even. We are not crestfallen, however, because we refuse to give up. We have been negotiating this contract for over six months, and to put into perspective how long we've been doing this, I'd like to give a brief timeline of events. been doing this, I'd like to give a brief timeline of events. On September 1st of 2022, the union sent a letter to library administration to start negotiation for a new contract as the current one expired on December 31st of 2022. November 11th of 2022, the bargaining team from both the union and the library met for the first time. Since February of 2023, Peoria Public Library employees, patrons, and retirees have been coming to board meetings and holding peaceful informational pickets to show support for library staff and to demand a fair contract. On June 7th of 2023, mediation began due to both sides being unable to come to an agreement. On June 8th of 2023, mediation ended with both sides still being unable to come to an agreement. That brings us here today, asking for your help in place of our director and the board of trustees that you, the Peoria City Council, appointed yourselves. And we know you have seen us in the news. And we know that you utilize our facilities. We're not asking for much, quite the contrary. We know it is possible within the library's current budget to give us more than they are offering. We know that annually $200,000 or more is left unspent and rolls into capital development, but remains unspent. We find that to be a gross mismanagement of taxpayer money. We are continuing to fight for our fellow employees to make more than minimum wage and to have a salary that provides enough income so that 16% of our staff aren't working a second job to make ends meet. Under an expired contract, we are continuing to provide programming. We are continuing to provide heating and cooling facilities during extreme weather, free tech help, and another number of other services that we provide with a smile despite poor pay. However, vocational awe does not put food on the table. The message we have received from our library administration throughout the negotiation process is that they don't care if we find a better paying job. Many of us hold post-secondary degrees and many of us hold post-secondary degrees specializing, specializing in the field of library sciences, but we still get paid peanuts. There is a banner on Peoria Public Library's website that says, "Our collection is worth millions, but our expertise is priceless." Are we priceless? Show us. Our staff cannot afford the benefits that we are offered. Our staff cannot afford to eat more than one meal a day. Our staff are on government assistance. Our staff are housing insecure, and our staff cannot afford to work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
And City Council members, I'm not a big speaker. I don't get up much and talk, but I am a library user. Um, came here 35 years ago, immediately located the McClure Branch Library, kind of made it our second home after school and in the summer. Um, my kids met other kids there who were doing the same thing. And by using the library when we didn't have much money to work with, we could reinforce what they were learning at school. Um, this is how libraries have always worked in my history. Uh, it's embarrassing to know that these wonderful people who devise the games, the activities, story hours, consultation, um, they are just not getting paid what they're owing. And naturally, I was inquiring about one staff person who had helped me with an issue six months ago and wondered if he was still at the, the branch. Unfortunately, he had obtained, obtained a position in Chillicothe, and he's probably going to stay at that library for a while. It's disappointing. Um, in my professional career, I work with children. Um, we were primarily working with DCFS-involved children, taking them, um, in groups and having activities. My first place to get new, updated library books and to consult about the, the quality of them has been the libraries. What's going to happen if all these wonderful people who know there's, the opportunities available, are willing to do research for us? What if they're not there? What if people who just barely are learning have to be the leaders? That's just not fair to the current staff, certainly not fair to the community. Um, finally, I'm, like many of you, aware of the use of the library by our homeless population. A lot of times in the winter, they're waiting at the door for a warm place to go from wherever they spent the night. Uh, they're always received with courtesy. If there's an awkward situation, the staff are right there to help figure it out. Um, I frankly don't mind if somebody's taking a bath in the, in the bathroom there be, because they, I know that they don't have a safer place to take a bath. So the, the library is just serving in so many ways to keep Peoria a home where people can survive. And I think it's only fair that the staff who are working hard at doing that get a better pay grade. Thank you.
We have Heather McMecon. Hi.
I'm new to Peoria, having just relocated here a few months back. I'm a small business owner of digital media advocacy consulting and services. I come with the expertise of someone who's worked in service, education, and on the web, having spent the last 15 years as a webmaster, a civil servant at a major university here. And I can't speak to the library usage because I haven't used them a whole lot yet, but I do want to bring up sort of a, a lot of concerns I have because I do understand and have some experience fighting extremism online. Right now, our nation is experiencing an unprecedented challenge from white supremacy, white nationalism, Christian dominionism, and extremist fascist authoritarianism attacking our systems of government, service, and the good-faith public servants such as yourselves, trying to serve our people. This is done in service to limiting access to knowledge, to history, to, to what is equality, to aspirational material, to the functioning and govern, of our government and services. When our press isn't able to report on things in our outer regions and the press goes down, what is the repository of how a government is functioning? It is the library archives. A lot of people aren't quite familiar with this, but after World War II, after the Nazis lost, there was not a lot of American appetite for accountability. It's, it fell upon people like Simon Wiesenthal to go into the libraries to find the facts, which formed the basis of hunting down these mass murderers and bringing them to justice at Nuremberg. We know during the pandemic, we have had people do things that they shouldn't be doing, and that has been recorded in people's journals and diaries. Who's the repository of this much, very necessary data? That is our librarians. It's also about being guardians of what our culture is, what our historic truth, the functioning of how we do our lives here at this point in time. And those repositories are what will inform future generations about how we made it through this time, assuming we do so. Libraries are under attack from anti-intellectualism, anti-government, and anti-accurate, uh, representational history fear mongering. Austerity is a tactic of white supremacy and authoritarianism. Austerity budgets, I'm not saying that's what's happening here. I'm saying this is what it looks like. When we have an executive director and a library board who have taken it upon themselves apparently to tell others that they're just not going to offer anymore when they come to the table, and I'm a big supporter of unions, go ask me. Um, I will just say that that is hypocritical. It is bad faith bargaining. Who appointed the executive director or asked him to make a decision to hire a lawyer to sit on the opposite side of the people who live here and serve our people and tell them they aren't even worth the cost of living rage at a time of unprecedented inflation that is harming their families and their ability to care for their own? Doing something like that is a tactic. It is a tactic to destroy the quality of lives of workers. It is a tactic to make them give up and to leave and to stop watchdogging the things that we need watchdogged. It will harm the services. You, our libraries here, and I say our, um, but the ones that you have here are an amazing gem. You have wonderful people. I've seen them in action. They are caring. They deserve to be treated like we value them. And that includes having an executive director who will come to the table and do his bargaining and not hire a legal firm who doesn't even live here to tell people they aren't worth even a little bit above minimum wage. Bring a fair contract. Our workers are the, are the best protections our libraries have in our services. If they are not protected, they won't be able to fit, right now they make up the gap in our education. They provide tutoring. They provide other opportunities for cha-challenging and helping children get caught up. And we have wonderful library volunteers. Please tell your library board to either step up and your executive director to come to the table with a fair contract offer or to step down or remove them. Thank you.
Um, hello. Um, following kind of the same line of, um, support for the librarians. Um, you know, I, I, I moved to Peoria about, uh, two years ago. And, um, since then, I've, I've spent a lot of time at the libraries. Um, I go there pretty regularly. Um, I've actually been to, um, the Lincoln, the McClure Lakeview, and, um, the North Branch on multiple occasions. Um, one of the things that I, uh, have noticed, um, is that every librarian has been extremely friendly and helpful. Um, and there are stewards, uh, they are stewards of amazing programs, um, ranging from things like live music, um, book clubs, which I love participating in because I'm a bit of a nerd, um, and meeting spaces for the community, um, programs on foraging and gardening, which I've been unfortunate to not be able to attend, but, um, was very excited to share with my friends, um, that that was going on. Um, there are also stewards, uh, stewards of our history. We have a wonderful, uh, history room, which the librarians there have helped me look through. And I've learned a lot of really cool things about Peoria that, um, I otherwise wouldn't have been able to know. Um, I think it's important that we keep the wonderful librarians, uh, who make our community a great place to live, um, with the work that they do here. Um, and that if we don't make an effort to pay them appropriately, then we're going to start bleeding talented individuals. We're going to be losing them to other libraries around the area, which would pay them better than what, um, our current library board is willing to offer them. So I am asking you, uh, to preserve that quality and take action where you can, uh, to improve the offers that they're getting. Um, because from what I've seen, from what I've heard, it doesn't look like, uh, they're getting a fair deal. Thank you.
Nourish and Southside Community United for Change, or SCUC, are the groups I represent. We partner with the city council. Um, with every partnership, there are strengths and challenges. So I want to start with a glaring strength. Um, thank you very much for the $5,000 grant that you approved for Nourish. I came here tonight to say thank you. So very much appreciate it for how you're, um, giving dollars to improve the South End of Peoria. You not only gave my nonprofit organization that amount, but you generously approved every grant application, and all of them represented the South Side of Peoria. Thank you. This is, it's encouraging, um, and it's building a good, strong relationship between us. So, um, and those are the, the, the items you had. That's from our South Side members. I'm also here to, um, speak of a challenge right now. Um, Madam Clerk, I would like to give Mayor Ali and the Peoria City Council this packet of 151 individually signed requests in support of a moratorium on the carbon dioxide pipeline. Um, it's being presented to the city council to urge you to move forward with drafting and considering a moratorium on carbon dioxide pipelines. We urge the moratorium to be in effect at least until the U.S. Pipelines and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration completes its current reviews and have updated regulations in full effect. I also have copies of a sample drafting of a resolution to protect citizens and first responders from the dangers of high-pressure carbon dioxide pipelines. Carbon dioxide is colorless and odorless. It is usually a gas, but can be solid or liquid. There may be amounts of carbon dioxide, trace amounts in the air we breathe right now. But when liquefied, it becomes many times more volatile. Upon an explosion, carbon dioxide robs the air of oxygen. Any gas-powered vehicle will not operate. I repeat, carbon dioxide robs the air of oxygen, whatever human being needs to live. SCUC and members of the South Side of Peoria became aware of a proposed carbon dioxide pipeline in March of 2023. We were appalled at the idea of a proposed pipeline containing highly pressurized and explosive liquid carbon dioxide, beginning in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, running through the South Side of Peoria, and ending at a sequester site in Decatur, Illinois, where the liquid carbon dioxide would be put into the ground. Surely something so dangerous would not be allowed underneath the ground in the most vulnerable and underfunded part of Peoria. At that time, we believed Peoria leadership would not even entertain this effort. Please know that the proposed Wolf ADM Pipeline is being discussed right now. Companies have approached the Illinois Commerce Commission for approval in the next 17 days. They would like to break ground in 2024. Oh my. I just wanted, I just want to, uh, begin with this pipeline as I wrap up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Counsel, eight seconds, eight seconds is how much time Sotarsia, Mississippi victims half a mile from the explosion site had before they lost consciousness. Tens pos, possibly hundreds of millions of dollars stand to be earned from this carbon dioxide pipeline, yet it is not worth the value of one life, of one single Peoria resident. Please strongly consider a moratorium. Thank you for your time.
We have an executive session. I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C 11 to discuss pending litigation and pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120, 2 C 21 for approval by the body of closed session minutes. Uh, motion moved by Councilmember Allen. Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cash your ballots. Councilmember Kelly? Okay. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you for your service.